First up on our agenda this evening is approval of our May 17, 2023 minutes. Wish we could review those.
On the agenda tonight, we have a land consolidation plan and it looks like the one we approved a couple of months ago. What's going on there? Do you want to cover now?
No, I'll just, on the minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
We'll get to that.
Okay, we approved it at the May 17. Same property owners, it's just the different parts.
Oh, okay.
Different parts of itself, okay. But I'll make a motion then to approve the meeting minutes from May 17, 2023.
Thomas, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Mark, do you want to brief us on consolidation plan for the L1B?
Yes, as it was pointed out, this is the same properties that were before us in May. In May, there was, if you look at this current plan, there was a section of property below where it says L3 that was deeded over to the Beans and now they're deeding over these two little strips from the Beans to Hannah is what's before you guys tonight.
Does Hannah have a house on that lot already?
Yes, there is a house on that lot.
So basically, they're just making the new lot 45 feet wider than the old one was by adding the piece on both sides.
Yes, they're making the Hannah's property wider and reducing the road frontage for Bean down to just that strip.
But the changes they make all meet zoning?
Everything is, meets everything. All the regulations in place.
I'll move for approval of the, there's a convenience plot for 415 River Road. Yes, submit it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So ordered. Next up on the agenda this evening is a review, continuing review of the zoning ordinance update. This evening, we'll talk about Article 3, which covers the central business district and the proposed traditional business district regulations and possibly Article 4, the regulations that are applicable to all the districts in the state. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mark. Did you have any introductory or just?
We have with us from CT Gassanza, Lisa to continue on her quest to help us improve those zoning ordinance for Fort Thomas.
Good evening. Can y'all hear me okay? Okay. Again, if you can't, just start waving at me at some point. Good evening. I'm Alisa Duffy Rogers with CT Consultants. With me is Robert Seitziger, who is also with CT, and thank you so much for having us here. Tonight, we will quickly run through the zoning ordinance update process. We will review three draft zoning ordinance sections, as the chair said, starting with the central and traditional business districts and moving into the general regulations and temporary and accessory use structural regulations as well. And then we will end with next steps. I will stop several times during the presentation to answer questions and to hear from the community members. The zoning ordinance update process is progressing in roughly four phases. The first phase included analysis of the existing conditions in the community, including an analysis of your existing built environment as well as your existing zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. At the end of that phase, we produce a diagnostic report, which included findings and recommendations, and that's currently available on the city's website. Phase two includes revising the regulations and major changes from your current plan to be implemented out, and we are currently in phase two. Phase three is when we will complete all the amendments based on all of the info that we've received today, align everything with the new zoning map and with the new zoning districts, and then phase four is adoption. So we have added additional opportunities for community members to discuss proposed zoning changes and to ask questions, and those conversations have been called coffee and conversation. Usually with those are on the Thursday following the planning commission meeting on Wednesday evenings, but this week, we had them actually on Wednesday due to, on Tuesday evening due to a scheduling conflict. But next month, we will return to having meetings on Thursday. After these meetings, at the following planning commission meeting, I will report out what I hear from the community members. At the meeting in May, we had approximately 12 community members attended, and we discussed the appropriateness of murals in downtown and other portions of the community. We sat and talked for quite a while about the future built environment in downtown, and to these expressed concerns about the mass and scale of tall and long buildings potentially in downtown, particularly if they were adjacent to the sidewalk. We talked about some of the changes to the sign ordinances that were discussed in May, particularly electronic message signs and signs in the front of these R3 small apartment buildings, and we talked about pedestrian signs in downtown and Midway. We also discussed the June 5 meeting that the chair mentioned a few minutes ago, that happened on June 5, and then we talked about the Tower Park historical overlay district as well in May. At the joint meeting with the city council and the planning commission on June 5, we discussed potential changes to the central business district, and tonight, we'll review those changes as well as review the traditional business district, which has been created in four in place. So despite there being very obvious differences between downtown and Midway, there is currently only one zoning district governing both of these areas, and that's the central business district. And there is no difference in terms of uses or development standards between Midway and downtown. So as a result of that, on June 5, we talked about changes that would then tailor some of these districts more to your existing built environment and what you think your future vision is for downtown and Midway. So as we're going through this discussion, there's often good times where I'm going to be asking you questions, but there's a lot of information. So if anytime I'm not being clear, you want to talk about it, just yell at me. In downtown or town center, which is what most of the city's planning documents call downtown, the area where we're sitting right now, what we have proposed is creating the CBD-TC. So CBD District 4 Town Center. And within this district, based on what we talked about on June 5, would be three subdistricts with their own unique intent statements, and that would be mapped separately, and we'll show you that map in just a second. There are actually three, as I said. One is the core district, and that is where we sit. That is where like One Highland is and all of that. It would be your traditional commercial center, and the proposed uses and development standards reflect that. And in that particular location, we would be requiring non-residential uses on the first floor. There's the town center supporting district, which would be less intense in terms of development. It has more flexibility in terms of use. And then the town center residential subdistrict, which of those homes that are located on the periphery of the district like O'Nola and Lumley and Forest and Audubon. So let's look at the map. So here's the map. The core is what you see in purple. The blue would be the supporting district, which essentially starts at shown and then goes all the way to Forest Avenue, which includes the City Hall building. And then the orange would be the TC residential subdistrict. Any questions about how those are mapped at this point?
I guess I did, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
Residential district that's up there on, I guess it's on, at the very north end up there.
On Forest.
And that's behind the Henry's office.
Right.
House. Is that just a residence?
That's just a single family home.
So I guess that's my question. Does it really even belong in the town, in the CBD district period, I guess, is the question.
So the district boundaries that you see on the very outskirts of this are what were established in 2011, and it's whatever reason that loaned home on Forest Avenue was lumped into the central business district at that point in time. So certainly, it could be pulled out at this point. I have heard, I haven't talked directly to the property owner, but I have heard third hand, that the property owner would not have any concerns about that because they do it to the, is occupied today as a single family home, and they continue, they plan for it to continue to be occupied as a single family. Again, I have not been told that directly by him, but that is what I've heard, second and third hand. So yes, it could potentially come out. I'm sorry?
It should be changed.
Okay, so bring it to R1C, which is what everything to the west of it is.
Yeah, I just, I just can't envision any commercial development ever happening there.
Could have been to some parking corner? Could lie about there to.
It could have been parked. It could have been that they didn't want to hamper redevelopment on that property by having it immediately adjacent to R1. It could have just been, truthfully. So I was told, again, I don't know this directly, that when the boundary lines were digitized by the county back in the day, it was done by hand, and it wasn't necessarily done following property lines or in any rational manner. It was literally a young man sitting in a room with a digital pen and drawing a line.
That's correct, and I think that's what happened.
And so that may be what happened there as well. And we were going to talk about that in a couple of other situations. So it could easily be that it wasn't even actually intended to be in the district. The line just mistakenly got drawn there, and that property was used with it ever since.
And I guess similarly, I guess on the middle, like the third lot over, it looks like it's the lot itself just deeper than the other group, whether it's here or there, or is, why is that looking, it's hanging in there? I guess is what.
It is literally deeper.
Yes.
The lot is.
The lot is deeper. The lot line is that deep. I mean, there are some irregularities in terms of lot lines all over downtown, and that one just happens to be deep. But while we're talking about misdrawn lines, I think one of the goals for this process is to fix some of the places where things have been split zoned. So if you look at the, on Lumley, Lumley, the house next to the orange is actually split zoned. The east side of it is zoned R1C, and the west side of it is zoned CBD.
Is it possible to zoom up at all, or is that just?
That's, that's as far as it gets, I mean, in terms of that map. But when you zoom in on it, like if you go on the Link GIS site, you zoom in, and you click on the right, it says R1C, and you click on the left, it says CBD. Again, I think that was simply the result of bad digitizing at the time. So in most cases where that's happened, I'm the one to recommend that it.
Follow the lot.
It followed the lot line, and so that house would then be zoned to R1C. And there'll be, there's a few other places where that's happened. And in what particular place, it's so unclear, we're actually going to have a conversation about it.
Well, I guess, just in general terms of, terms of those houses on Lumley, I know that at one time, there was discussion, and this was back 10 plus years ago, there was discussion about the city at the time of creating a new public street behind the walk-in porch property in the corner of Lumley, connected to the lower parking lot down there behind the, the building there, behind the city, behind the city.
Oh, right, on the city going.
Right here. But, and it was always thought, well, if that, that ever happened, if there was a new access point, you could maybe have some redevelopment at a corner. I mean, topographically, I don't, I don't know that there's really a compelling case that that could be, that could be redeveloped as commercial, but if the convenience store and, you know, in the mid-block there is ever redeveloped, the old property there is all redeveloped, and I could see that potentially being redeveloped. I don't know. Back and forth on the.
The school board wanted to do that. They have, or the city wanted to do that. They have a process they can go.
They could, yeah.
I mean, they could, they might, they might be exempt from something if it's the school board.
Right, right. I just, I just don't know that I foresee that happening, statement being, but I'm okay with it either way, honestly.
So the other thing I should point out, a couple of things. So in the meetings that we had with community members last night and today, where you see US Bank, and if I miscalled the bank, because I apologize, but US Bank and Guardian Bank, and then the post office on the east side that's heading toward Montville Court, several community members, basically everything from village players to the end of the district, have felt like that should be, would be more appropriate to be blue, with the distinction being, for the most part, between the purple and the blue, the development standards are fairly different. During the, in the purple, all the buildings come to the street. You have a, potentially a 40-foot maximum height. In the blue, it would be a minimum 25-foot front setback, so we're maintaining the existing setbacks that you see out there today, and a shorter maximum height of 35 feet. And the community members that I spoke with last night and today are more comfortable with there being less height and more setback for those two banks in particular. And so there, you know, there are comments where they would like to see that go to the supporting subdistrict as opposed to the core.
I agree with that, and I thought we talked about that at the city council meeting in a little bit.
We talked about it a little bit, and no decisions were made.
Okay.
So we're here now to start having that kind of conversation.
I would like to see it changed.
To the US, the US bank?
The two banks in the post office area.
I guess the question is though, if you have that setback, can you rebuild that property?
And that's the issue. And the other thing about it is, unlike where One Highland is, which butts up dramatically with Woodland Place, there are, you know, there's no homes behind US Bank. So you could potentially have, you know, some significant redevelopment there that would not impact anyone's home in the same way that One Highland impacts Woodland.
I guess the question is too, though, if, so, well, we can get into this, we talked about the supporting district. So if we had the setback, you could still put in parking in front of the building?
No, there would be no parking. There would still be no parking. But that doesn't mean there could be hardscape, right? Someone could have, you know, outdoor dining or something like that. But, because people are envisioning that there's a setback, there's grass. That's not necessarily the case. There would be no parking, but there could be hardscape.
So the setback would be 25 feet?
The, the minimal would be 25.
Minimal, right.
And the height would be instead of 40 feet, 35 feet?
Right.
So essentially, what would happen, and we'll just make the assumption that the post office is not going to go away, whether it's the post office or not, that building's going to stay. So if you push the building back and you decrease the height, you're more than likely, to get redevelopment, you are more than likely forcing those three lots where those two banks sit to be developed as one, in order for you to have enough land for the redevelopment to happen. If you leave it with a taller height and a shorter front setback, then you might, and I'm still not going to guarantee it, but you might get two separate projects instead of one. But if you push the setback back and you decrease the height, in order for it to pencil in any way at all, both of those banks have to come down and be one project.
So if, if it's not 35 feet, what would you recommend?
So, you know, I'm not going to recommend anything. I am just telling you that these are the situations.
Right.
I personally think that either works in terms of what your vision is. What, what people said to me was, by the time you get to the funeral home, which is on the other side of Montville, you are moving into a more residential character. But again, keep in mind, the funeral home and, you know, the apartment buildings and everything past there are zoned R3. It is becoming more residential, and this could be a transition between the buildings that are right up at the sidewalk for the women's, Old Women's Club, or now Village Players are, as you progress down towards the funeral home. So you can go either way, but you are probably going to force one bigger development if you like those changes.
So the post office now, how far back do you think that's at?
It's probably 35 feet, is my guess.
Okay.
So the post office isn't a viable market for the year?
No, I was just wondering, to get some vision of 25 feet.
Oh, the, the US Bank is about 25 feet.
Yeah.
Because the post office is set back slightly forward.
Yeah. So essentially, if you put it 25 feet, that's what you have already with the, with the bank thing.
Right.
It's the same.
It's the same.
Correct. So the only difference is you're saying that if you did that, kept the same, it could only be, it would be shorter.
It would be shorter, and you would, in order for it to pencil, to work.
Right.
You would probably have to take both banks, combine the parcels, in order for it to act the economic way. Well, theoretically, there's no parking requirement in downtown, but we all know that while there's no requirement, they still may need parking. And I should also point out, just so that you know this, I'm sure y'all already do know, but the bank that is Guardian, I think, actually has its entrance to the drive-through off Montville Court today, and they own that lot that runs behind the post office.
Ultimately, I can almost see the post office going away too.
I think the post office as a use may go away.
Right.
But it is in the local historic district. So, you know, would have to go in front of the design review board and get a COA for it to be demolished.
You go to postal service.
Well, that's true. It's still owned by the postal service. That is if it becomes private.
If it's private, they'll own.
But the postal service is its own entity and, you know.
They, they would, they would go to the DSA, and then they would optimize.
So Robert looked at us, and the post office is 45.
Forty.
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 Forty foot setback.
Forty foot post office, so I was close.
Oh, the setback is 40.
Yeah, I was guessing 35, it's 40. He measured it for us on the jetty side.
But the bank is 25.
The first bank.
Correct, correct. It's US Bank. Guardian says back.
So what's your pleasure? Do we want to continue to have this discussion, or do we want to make it blue and make it supporting?
I'd still like to see it blue.
Yeah, I think it'd be good blue too. I think everyone is concerned about having zero front yard development here. I think that's been a real clear theme throughout all our discussions.
Okay, so we'll make it blue. We'll make it supporting.
Alisa, is that two buildings or three? Is it the two banks?
It'd be the two banks and the post office.
And the post office?
Right. So the next question that I have in terms of lot lines, look at Fifth Third Bank, which is, you know, the third one south of Forest Avenue. So the existing boundary for Fifth, for the CBD is that dotted line that you see along the back of it. So the front portion adjacent to Fort Thomas Avenue is zoned CBD. The back portion is zoned R1C. And in this case, we understand why it may be split zoned, right, as opposed to someone's bad digitizing. So my question to you is, what do you want to do moving forward? Do you want to bring it into the CBD so that when Fifth Third Bank is redeveloped, they have more property, or do you want to leave it the way it is?
I'd like to leave it the way it is. I think the green space is nice.
It's pretty much undeveloped land, isn't it?
So there's a fall about 30 feet from the back of the bank down to the, that lot line.
The thought was when we did that initially was that if somebody wanted to come in and build a couple of houses off the end of Woodside, you could do that.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
That was the idea.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I'm okay with leaving it split. I guess the question is, is the dash line from the Fifth Third Bank up to the curve there at One Highland, is that sort of the back quarter of those lots in the CBD, and then the rest of it's not, or?
So again, I think that's just bad digitizing.
Right. So anyway, I guess the question is, it's going to follow lot lines in the blue, is what I'm.
Yeah, it will follow lot lines in the blue.
Okay.
I mean, otherwise, if they could get these from off the back of Woodside, they could develop that commercial.
Or that's correct.
And that's why, yeah, we don't want that.
Right, I don't want that.
So Fifth Third Bank will stay as it is, once we fix the lot lines.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I think you just want to make sure that, and I presume that this is the case, that wherever that difference of the zoning is, it still accommodates their setback and existing building and everything else.
We will.
We don't want to create a, not a property by accident.
Yeah, we will. All right, so to recap what we've said, the orange parcel, which is a single family home on Forest, goes to R1C. The Fifth Third Bank stays as it is, making sure that we don't violate any setbacks, and everything from the women's building, the women's club or the village players to Montville becomes supporting.
Right, I'm still not completely sure why the ones on Miller and Lumley have to be at orange.
So we had, the conversation we had, and then also the same thing on Audubon.
That's it.
So we had a conversation with the planning, with the city council of, do we want to take those out, or do we want to leave them in? And my understanding is that you wanted, you as a group, both of you, wanted to leave it in for a couple of reasons. One being, you constrain the parcels on Fort Thomas for redeveloping if they are next door to something that is zoned R1, and some of those people may have bought their homes with investment back expectations. So, but I think we've all had heartburn that they're all non-conforming uses today. So the sub, creating the subzone, that would, and we'll talk about this in a minute with the uses, that allows a single family home, so that it becomes a conforming use. And then one of the questions I'm going to ask you is, what we are proposing there is a shop house, which would constrain the uses more than is currently constrained today. So they would be conforming, but they wouldn't exactly have all the development rights they have today, but they have some. So again, we don't necessarily have to make that decision tonight, but the decision, as I understood it on June 5, was to leave them in the district, but to give them some ability to expand and improve their homes, but don't take away all of their development rights, and that's what this does. So the other thing I should point out about split zone parcels, so just so that you know that I didn't completely lose my mind, on Highland, you will see that there's one small lot that is purple, and then the back of it is orange on Audubon. So on Audubon, it's a single family home, but attached to that single family home is a storefront on Highland. So in that particular case, I just, you know, made a very conscious decision to split zone it, so that the front could continue to be an office and the back could be a home.
What is it now? It's all CBD now?
It's all CBD now, yeah. So we, I mean, it could still be in the core or whatever else, but the front of it's being used as a home today. So that's why that particular parcel is split zoned. It's just an unusual situation. Any other discussions about? Okay, so as we talked about on June 5, right now, in everything that's zoned central business district, the first floor has to have a non-residential use. And there's all different reasons for why that happened, but that is the case. So right now, everything has to have non-residential use if it's zoned central business district. So what's being proposed at this point is where you see that rust line, that is the only place where you would be required to have non-residential on the first floor. So essentially, it's the core, and since we have made the decision to take out the two banks and the post office, that rust line will move up. But, so essentially, it would be, you know, But, so essentially, it would be, you know, One Highland, everything that you see, you know, between Miller and Longley, down through Fort Thomas, R1C and all of that, and then the two buildings that are just now the Highland.
So with the supporting, it doesn't require a commercial use on the first floor, but it allows it?
Correct. Yeah, it doesn't require it, but it does allow it. Any concerns about the non-proclaimed residential frontage? I assume that we make the change for supporting. And again, we all know this is not final. This is, you know, phase two. I'm not hearing any discussion.
No, one thing that's popped in my mind though is if, if, so if there was residential uses, I would go in where there's offices or commercial now. Is there any prohibition on residential parking on Fort Thomas?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. My question was, if there would be, if anything would be replaced, say the Fifth Third became residential, or, or the Music Academy or any of those houses through there, would you allow, I mean, basically, would you permit the residences to park their car on Fort Thomas Avenue all day long, is the question essentially?
But further down, they do already.
Right, right. I'm just saying, in the center of town though, when you're, when you have a closet business district, would you permit people to park their car there all day long?
Right.
As a, if you live there. So that's just a question.
That's a good one. So what's the policy right now?
There's no residents.
There's no residents, but further down where there are, do you have to park there all day long?
They can, I guess. Twenty-four hours, I think. You can't park, you have to move your cars.
Yeah, see, they have a driveway.
I think. That's not something though.
No, sadly, that's driveway, but.
Right, right, it was.
Yeah, just a ordinance, but there are many communities who say, because there's not enough parking on the, of the lot, you can park in front of your house all day long. That's a, a choice that's been made in communities that are compact, you know, like what you have on Miller or on the next place. But whether or not, if Fifth Fourth Bank, you know, became.
Well, I'm just saying, if you're allowing more residential use in the CBD, then you could be, because part of it, the reason that we reduced the parking requirements on the commercial side, was that it's a public option to park it for commercial. While you have residents, residents taking up that commercial parking, then does that change that equation?
It could potentially, theoretically, people go to work during the day, and so the, the spaces would be, I mean, that's not necessarily true. People work from home now, people, you know, not everyone in the house works.
Yeah, I, I just think it's something we, not for tonight, but it's something, I think that's covered by the city women, so.
It is, it is just something about that.
Y'all okay with where the non-residential requirement is at this point?
Yes, thanks.
Yes.
So let's move on and talk about the Midway. So in Midway, there are actually five sub-districts as it's currently developed. So we have them all core, so there's Midway Core One, which is the commercial entertainment hub for Midway, and that would have, be required to have non-residential uses on the first floor. Midway Two includes the other commercial areas in Midway, like the pizza places and all of that, mostly those areas up where the buildings are set back from the sidewalk. And then Midway Core Three is the VA hospital, hospital and Cincinnati Bell Building, both of which are zoned some form of residential today. The other two sub-districts are residential. The first is Midway Residential Ones, which includes the existing residential properties that are on South Fort Thomas Avenue, which you see on the picture here, and then Midway Court. When we had the conversation with the council on June 5th, basically, we put the future of Midway Court in the parking lot, and said we will deal with that in phase three. So while they are in Midway Residential One now, that is merely a placeholder. There's no decisions have been made there. The Midway Residential Two are those homes that are on Garrison and Shawnee and Southview. And it preserves these use of these parcels for single-family detached homes much of the way, as we were just talking about in the old way.
So just real quick, just to summarize, so what is the, what is the relative speaking difference between Midway and Residential One and Residential Two, other than geographically I know they're different?
Right, so the, the biggest difference is issues, for the most part. So for the, for example, the orange homes that, that front on South Fort Thomas Avenue, those, if they wanted to convert and have all of it be used as business, they would be allowed to do so.
Okay.
The ones that are in red, which is the Midway Residential Two, would only be allowed as a shop house, which would be a restricted use. And those restrictions would be things like, you can only use, you know, five hundred square feet, no signage, only one outside employee. Whereas the ones in orange, for example, the whole thing could then become an architect's studio, and you could have unlimited numbers of employees and those kinds of things. Now, there are other constraints that deal with that. There's parking and all of that. But that's the major distinction between the two of them. So the, the presence on the avenue gives them more uses.
On the, the, the residential that's on Grant there in Southview, behind, I guess, the Southside Market and what else? Those are just residences now, correct?
Correct.
I'm just trying to remember why they were included initially too.
There's a house behind Best Furniture, and there's a couple little red little units, I think, behind like Fort Thomas Pizza and the pub. Are we keeping those non-conforming uses then?
Yes, those would all remain, because they're in the purple, which is the core one, and those who just all remain non-conforming. But yes, there are several houses back there, and one I actually had to trespass to get back there to see. Because I could, I saw it on the map, I'm like, I should have to see what this is.
In a hotel.
Yeah, well, it's now.
Right.
But yes, there are several places back there with homes, which, but they would just be, continue to be non-conforming.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about those properties that are on Southview Grant, I mean, do they, did it get that they really belong in the CBD or should they be residential?
They could be residential. Again, it's the same issues that we talked about earlier, which is, you know, does it constrain the parcels at front on South Fort Thomas, and then their investment-backed expectations? I have talked to a couple of people who own properties in that area, and they did have investment-backed expectations for those.
Okay.
Those are the only few that I've talked to. And then I've talked to the folks on Shawnee, who until recently didn't even know, they live further down, didn't even know that those homes were zoned Central Business District, and were quite shocked to hear that. And as a result of that, that's why that question came up on the June of meeting, is do we even want to be to have them in there, given?
Oh, yeah.
But again, it's the same issue, investment-backed expectations and constraining redevelopment along that.
Yeah, and I remember in our discussion last month, I think that Matt said, not Kramer, said he was going to reach, or somebody, somebody at the city staff level was going to reach out to some of the property owners and get their input, or please ask for their input.
I think what he said was, if the decision was to pull them out of the district, such that they lost development rights, that he felt like they needed to contact them?
Well, if you're changing the zoning district, you're going to have to notify regardless, but.
Not necessarily.
However, changing does that.
So, you know, any decision is, is, makes good policy sense, to leave them in or to take them out. But you are changing, potentially changing the value of someone's property if you change it from Central Business District to R1.
I think they were added in back in the day to allow the area to be big enough to something bigger to be developed there than there is right now.
Pretty tight, I mean.
It's pretty tight. So the question is, do you have, so let's, a minute, let's talk a little bit more about, so the purple is the core, Core One, the blue is the Core Two, and the gray is the Core Three. The gray is the Cincinnati Bell Building and the VA Hospital. Those currently are not zoned CBD. The Cincinnati Bell Building is zoned R3, which is your multifamily district. The VA Hospital is currently zoned R1C, which is your single-family district, allows institutions for human medical care as a conditional use. So we, we talked about on June 5th, pulling them into the district in order to give some direction on potential adaptive reuse of the VA Hospital. And then we talked about Cincinnati Bell for much of the same reason, as well as potential to expand the Midway into that parcel, so it's about a three-acre parcel. The conversations that I had with community members yesterday and today, after some fairly detailed conversations, they felt fairly comfortable about bringing in the Cincinnati Bell Building, less comfort about bringing in the VA Hospital, generally because it's a huge building, and any change is going to be a potentially huge impact on the community, you know, and Midway and that type of thing. But again, you know, consensus was reached as to what you do with it, you know, if and when the VA decides to leave. So, like I said, I, there was no, there was just a general heartburn about. Is that an unfair statement?
Not at all.
General heartburn about what the future of that building could be.
And it's a five-acre.
Yeah, it's about five acres, it's four points.
It's huge.
Yeah, it's a five-acre parcel, it's huge.
By and large, it's up to the federal government, whatever they want to do with it now.
Right. I mean, if, if it stays, and with the federal government, it's, you know, yeah.
But right now, we said today that what, the VA building takes up approximately sixteen percent.
Of that lot area.
Of that entire lot area. So if developed, the potential would be to use, what, up to sixty-something percent?
No, no, we have, I was just saying, that was, you could potentially, there are many different, once you decide what you want to do with it, there are many different ways to constrain it. It could be, you know, because there are two different ways to go with this, more than that. But potentially, you could reuse the hospitals, all of this massive amount of square footage, and potentially build additional buildings along the avenue. If that is potentially, there's enough land to do that, especially on the corner. If you did not want to intensify that much on that five-acre parcel, then we could constrain it by maximum lot coverage or any number of different ways to ensure that nothing happened between the existing building and Fort Thomas Avenue. But the big issue, right, right now, the big question is, do we want to bring it into the Central Business District and start that conversation now? Or we just want to say, leave it R1C and we'll deal with it at some point in time in the future? That's the big question.
I think we should leave it R1C and keep, and deal with it in the future, but I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I think we should include it in the CBD.
I'd like to bring it in, you can set the tone for the future, there's always one parking over there. I don't think that building will ever get raised, it's too good a building. I think if we convert to something.
Right, that's why.
That's full of asbestos.
Squatters apartments or something.
I mean, they've, they've, I mean, they've done all kinds of BS work there, as well as contaminated, there's all kinds of stuff there. It's usually cheaper to tear it down.
That's right.
Do you think?
Oh, yeah, they've tear it down.
It's going to cost some money, it's going to cost a lot of money to tear it down because of whatever, if there's.
It's going to cost more money to fix it.
And the space is going to be astronomical.
Yeah, I mean, it's just like the IRS, I think it's the same situation.
So.
And you saw what it did there.
Yeah.
It's torn down, I can see it developed, but stuff in it supports the business down there. Some parking, maybe even a park, green space type of thing, you know. We still want our statue.
Business. If you bring it into the business, could you make it green space?
So in order to ensure that part of it does not get developed, then you would have a standard such as, can only cover X percentage of the lot by building and parking. And then by doing that, the rest of it has to then be green space. That's a possibility as well. If we decide to do that, functionally, I will probably have to create a different sub-district, but that's really not a big deal. And that's just a call on math and different standards. Because it would make sense to have it locked in with Cincinnati Bell. But I think what we might want to do, there seems to be a consensus to, to bring it into the Central Business District. I think we need to just put it in the parking lot as well, and then come back and, and maybe even have like thirty or forty minutes, fifty minutes, one minute for that, and sketch out and think about what it is, given the size of the park. And we can think about it in two different ways. What if the building stays and becomes an adaptive reuse, given its size? Or what if it goes? And we can think about it holistically in that manner.
Well, the other thing I would suggest is have Matt contact the VA and see what their current facility plan is.
Anybody, does somebody know, he's done that recently?
Yes, I'm not talking about that. I can though.
You mind?
Sure. I mean, if we're going to engage in that level of discussion, it makes sense to bring it into the table at least, see what your term horizon is for it.
And we could also find, I mean, there's a huge amount, nobody really knows what they're doing there today.
It's a waking drug related.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry. I thought it was traumatic, right?
Um, mostly, addiction. So it's not.
Okay.
It can be post-traumatic stress, but it's opioid addiction and stuff.
So what would the advantage of bringing it into the CBD, because that's, this is the first I've heard anybody agree with that.
So the advantage would be.
Other than they couldn't then tear it down.
Well, that, that's true. Let's see, let's, don't forget that. If it, thank you. If it comes into the Central Business District, it then becomes a part of the local historic district. Because the way your historic district is written.
Well, the VA would, the VA would have to dispose of the property before they get rid of it.
They would. And if they dispose, if they dispose of the property, tear it down or whatever else, our hands are tied, whether it's in the local historic district or not.
Because the federal government is not something that's on.
Yeah, the federal government can do what it wants, short of particularly reactive.
You mind, I just have trouble hearing without the microphone.
So, so the advantage of bringing it in would be that we are letting people know what we think the intended future of it is. If you leave it in R1C, then no one knows, and it becomes up in the air. You haven't thought about it, you're not giving direction to anyone. By bringing it in and thinking about it, you're saying, this is what we think should go there. So that's the advantage.
But can you make that decision when you know the VA is going to sell it or tear it down?
So that, at that point, you're then at their mercy. You're much better off, say, because then you can say, at this point, we can say, this is what our vision is, and what you're proposing, if it, as to me, you know, days, like, once they deal with it and dispose it and give it to a private landowner.
Okay.
So once it's in the private hands, then they know what we want. If they don't know, and they, and they just bring something into us and we say, we don't like that, well, we have to give them some reasonable use of the land, and an R1C is not reasonable use, and we're at the mercy of whatever they propose, as opposed to bringing it in, setting standards, and letting people know what we want, that gives them a reasonable use.
So if you bring it into the Central Business District, can you do so with restrictions?
Of course.
But they don't have to pay restrictions.
The federal government doesn't have to, as long as they own it.
As long as they own it. But if they sell it.
If they sell it, anybody that they sell it to privately would have to adhere to the.
Even if we put it in Central Business District, they decide to raise that building and build, and even a bigger building or three buildings that do the same function because of the age of the building and the problems it's got. We want them to realize that we want it to support the same, the business district. So whether we have shared parking, we've always wanted for years up there, out of there.
Right.
Or a park setting or something.
I mean, part of the, what the federal process is for disposable federal property is, first, they have to alter it to another federal agency. So if the VA decides, and the VA could decide, well, we just want to tear that building, a little bit of small outpatient clinic or something there. But at least if we have it in the CBD, we can guide the VA, I mean, again, they're not, they're not, they can't, they don't have to follow our zoning, but if you have a plan in place that says, this is how we would like to see this parcel eventually redevelop, you can put a little political pressure on them to say, well, this is, you know, if you're going to, Mr. VA person, if you're going to redevelop the site, this is what the city's vision is for it. Obviously, they're not going to build small residential houses on the site, the VA isn't, or any other federal agency for that matter. And so after the VA has it, then they would have to alter it to another federal agency. If another federal agency doesn't want it, then hypothetically, it can go to a public agency, so the city could technically buy it, or some, the county or whoever. And then if a public agency doesn't want it, then it goes to the private market. So there's a, there's a process that would have to.
Do you think we have a leg up because we got the park right there behind it? I mean, it could support more parking for the park, the armory.
The city will inevitably have the, now, when I, when I say it goes to another agency, the other agency, whether it's the city or somebody else, still has to pay for it, just like the VA houses back on, out of center circle, but that's kind of the process.
It's unlikely that the VA would keep it in some fashion, they would want to download it, right?
Uh, unless they, unless they throw the building down and build something else on the site, but it's not really well-located for the VA. Even now, I think that's one of the biggest concerns about it is, for most of their patients, it's just not a easily accessible site, you know.
But if we say, if we put it in the CBD, what the vision, but we don't have a vision?
Well, I think that's what Alicia was suggesting.
That's what I was suggesting, that we put it in the parking lot, right? We, we make the decision to bring it into the Central Business District right now. And then we put it in a parking lot, and we have another joint meeting with council, and we...
Not literally, just...
No, 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 I'm sorry. I've got to stop saying that. We delay the conversation. Parking lot's a meeting facilitation term, I apologize. We delay the conversation as to its future until perhaps we can have another joint meeting with the planning commission and council, and then think about what is desirable there, whether it's, you know, the part that you're talking about, you know, in combination with your office building or in combination, whatever. So we have that conversation so that we can do that in a more deliberate manner than we can do right now.
I guess one of the things that scares me is having gone through many of these small, excellent meetings that you have at the coffee shop. Somebody mentioned boutique hotel made out of that building, and that just scares the liberal out of me.
Too big.
I'm telling you, that's what they said. I was telling a number of people why. So if we have no vision for that, and the only vision is a boutique hotel, I think our hands are tied.
But so, but, but there is no vision right now, all we have is it's zoned R-1C.
No, I understand, it's just, those, I mean, this is strictly 100% my opinion. I think that there are conversations, not on the table, but behind the screen, of potential development that we're at a loss to understand until we hear a rumor, which, if not, I don't think the way that it should operate. But if suddenly it's like, well, several people want a boutique hotel, well, I mean, that, I've not heard from...
Well, like I said, it's a process, in first it goes to the public process, and then eventually, if nobody else wants it, then they, then they'll give it, if they cannot give it, they'll, they'll leave it to the private market.
Matt, is it Kevin's head, no conversations regarding the VA there?
I didn't know that he had, I just, I just think it would be a good idea.
No, I agree. From a planning standpoint, it does make a lot of sense to have a Central Business District and only have business on one side of the street. You know, I think ultimately, when you have any kind of retail, entertainment kind of place, you know, all those businesses feed off each other, and I can't really envision anything else happening on the other side of the street that would really be good for that district. So I think it makes sense to put it in that, you have to see free zone.
And I think we may have to create a different sub-district, because I don't think, given what I've heard here with communities, that it really belongs in the same sub-district as Cincinnati Bell, it's a different panel.
Is it a, what is the difference really? I don't know.
Well, the difference is, it's a much larger parcel with a large building on it that may or may not be reused.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, this is a building that might be reused.
It may not be, but it...
But it could be commercial.
It could be commercial, or residential, or whatever else, and a much easier fa, I have it in it. It could all, it could be all, you know, equipment and...
It is.
Yeah.
It's a switch you're going to look at.
Yeah. But anyway, so we will, we will have a dedicated conversation about the VA hospital site, and then we may, may or may not then continue that conversation in Cincinnati Bell.
Yeah, I just think that, just in terms of being the Core Three, I think at the point, at least if the state needed, just if you could help with one, the code.
We may, we may. But I think it's a more detailed conversation than what happens right now.
Yeah, probably.
So again, we're talking about an area that is completely dedicated for non-residential uses.
Can you go back to one more, one last question?
Yeah.
The purple area there, is that the post there that's in the, try not to...
So the post is in...
Down mark just a little bit.
The post is in blue.
The purple area by your finger.
That's the ice.
What is that?
The post is here.
Okay, so that's on the other side.
The other ones are...
Is that the one that's...
It's a ice house.
Okay.
The arts house is blue.
But what's behind it that's the purple, I guess?
That's supposed to be red. It's supposed to be red.
Oh, I thought it was, it was purple.
It's supposed to be red.
Okay, okay, if it's red, that's fine.
Yeah.
They got the tires for you.
And then, and then, just, but while we're having that discussion, the blue that's on the other side of Brentwood, again, that's a situation where the law is mistakenly split so.
Yeah.
The right side is the Central Business District and the left side is R-1C. So it should follow.
We need a white board.
Yeah, yeah, so, I just feel for those poor people.
Yeah, right. I mean, I think a blanket statement just makes all the law lines, unless there's something that needs to be changed.
Yes, well, there is, you actually have that statement in your code, that if there is a dispute, it follows the law line. But having that in your code and trying to explain that to your mortgage banker is very much different than being able to click on the map and show what's up. So, this is where you'd be required to have a non-residential front, so non-residential frontage. Basically, it's from grassroots and vine all the way down to Best Furniture on that side of the street. Everywhere else, you could potentially have residential on the first floor, so where Snappies is or whatever could be redeveloped and be multi-family, for example.
And again, we do have some residential in there, but that would be non-conforming?
Yes, so the, the building that is mid-block between Midway Courts and Best, actually, it's the other direction, between Midway Court toward grassroots vines, would continue to be, it's non-conforming today, and it would continue to be non-conforming. And I, I understand that it has been non-conforming for a very long time. And it, and it's actually partly the reason that, that the zoning was changed to prohibit non-residential use, to require non-residential use, not to claim one property.
Well, that keeps in the context of the actual historic district area anyway.
Right, that's true. So the Traditional Business District is in Vernas. So today, in Vernas, it's zoned general commercial, oddly enough. We are proposing to create a Traditional Business District that respects the existing mixed-use environment that clearly exists, and due to the small size of Vernas, we're not proposing the sub-districts. But we had a brief conversation about Vernas last January, and so want to continue that conversation now. So at that time, the parcels that you see in red are currently zoned Central Business District, but they are those small multifamilies that are mirror images of the ones next door that are zoned R-3. So we talked about it in January, y'all said, just put those R-3 and pull them out of Vernas. Does that still work with your thinking?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the initial, when that was, when that part of the zoning district was set initially is when the gas station was still there where the park is.
Oh.
And so the thought was, well, the gas station went away, and if there was a new commercial development on that corner, you needed more, more lot size. And so that's why there's a split off, at that point, and now that it's a park, there's no, there's no basis for it.
So those will go up to R-3. The three single-family homes that are on the other side of Smees would go R-1C, but what I should tell you is the one that is the further south next to that multi, that mixed-use development is actually a duplex today.
Can you...
I'm not...
It's 914.
A bale?
Yeah, bale. Is, I think, is actually a duplex today. It might be a triplex, but I do know for sure that it's a duplex. And then the other two are single-family detached dwellings.
918 is the...
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, right. At first it was a...
Yeah, so the first two then are two families. So these, those would go to R-1C. As we discussed previously in R-1C, if the two-family exists the day the zoning ordinance is passed, it becomes a conforming use, which means that nothing can be converted to two-family, and no new two-families can be built, but the two families that exist become conforming. So that would be the case there, if you decide to put those in the, in the R-1C case.
Sorry, can I say that again?
Yeah, so what's proposed is to, right now, all those two families are non-conforming uses, but we have a fair number of two-families that are zoned R-1C today, and they're constrained by being non-conforming uses. So to make them conforming but not allow any new ones, we classify them as a restricted use, and the restriction is, the two-family use has to exist on the day the ordinance is passed.
Okay.
So if it exists that day, it becomes conforming. So no new ones can be built and nothing can be converted. So those would be blessed in place, the first two that are two families. And then everything on the other side of the street, which is where Tickle Pickle is and the insurance agency, would be Traditional Business District. The gas station would be the Traditional Business District, as well as the R-1C and all of that that's across North Fort Thomas Avenue would that be. So any concerns about those changes? Pulling the, the three green ones into the R-1C and the red ones into R-3?
If we left the green ones in the Traditional Business District, I mean, that doesn't make them non-conforming, does it?
It does right now, I mean, they're non-conforming today because they're a, some general commercial, so they're all...
Well, but you're proposing changing the general commercial to a Traditional Business District, which allows for mixed use and...
Correct, so we could, we could leave them as they are and, and make as a permitted use or restricted use, a duplex and single-family home if you wanted to do so. If your goal was to make them conforming, but if you just want to leave them as non-conforming as they are today, we would not add single-family and duplex as a permitted use in the Traditional Business District.
I guess I'm, I'm thinking that there's the same argument that the people that own those, if we take them out of the Business District, you know, it could be for investment or whatever else, like, we may be changing that night. I mean, it seems kind of unnatural to be across the street, at least for the first two, closest to, well, the first two, that's the Smithys, you know, or right across the street from the other business uses. It would make sense to keep those, to me, in that, if we're creating this new zone, the Traditional Business District, we can kind of make that whatever we want, can't we?
Sure. I could go either way with it. When we talked about it in January, y'all were like, pull it out, we can leave it in. On point, I have, I have a personal belief, and you can, you're welcome to disagree with me, that if it's being used as a single-family home or it's being used as a duplex, we should try to make it conforming if we can, without, if, if, if that does not in any way inhibit the ability to use the district in the way that you think it should be used. So we could have single-family detached and duplexes as permitted uses and have no harm done, right? Because there's no other ones there, nothing's going to be converted, and if, at some point in time, they wanted to put, you know, an office on the first floor, they could do that as well. We could do that if y'all would leave them in.
Are those first two, are they ingress, egress?
They are, yeah. It, it levels out as you have further up north, up north Fort Thomas. But yeah, those first two are like that. So I, I don't think they will ever be, you know, they're not, they're not like the homes on South Fort Thomas, which could be a shop house easily, because suspiciouses are gray, essentially. Those are not.
The only way I really see that it's being developed is if it was combined with the corner building at some point down the road eventually.
So you are, you are sending that signal as well, right? If you leave them in the district, you are sending the signal that at some point in time, you would be okay if someone tore down those three dwellings, combined the laws, and created commercial there.
Well, we want the, we want the district to grow a little bit from one base, right? It's almost too small to feed upon itself back and forth, as you talked earlier in the days. You like these businesses interchange and work together, and then right now, it's really pretty small.
So you are sending that signal when you zone in Traditional Business.
I'm for keeping it in.
Is there any significance of the triangle that's up there on the upper right, or is that just a line-winged situation, or is that...
So I think that's the next topic for conversation.
Okay.
And we can, we can start there now, because it's somewhat, it somewhat goes with this conversation. So the building that's in the black triangle is that four-unit building that is there currently. It is split-zoned as well. The left side of it is zoned CBD, the right side of it is zoned R-1C. And in either situation, everything there is non-conforming in terms of use. So there's nothing about that line that works for that building. So my question to you was, what do you want to do with it? Do you want to zone it R-3 so that it becomes a conforming use in the multifamily district? Do you want to bring it into the Traditional Business District? But I think we are, we're doing everyone a disservice by letting it hang out there in limbo. But what I should point out to you, given the size of the building and the oddness of the shape of that parcel, in any situation, almost, the building itself is going to be non-conforming. So we are, there's probably nothing we can do that's going to make the structure conforming, but we could make the use conforming.
Yeah, I, my thought would be to leave it as an R, well, not leave it, but have it as R-3 cleaned up though, or there.
Right, but it's not, I mean, today, I mean, it's, you know, to the north, east side of it is R-1, and then on to the other side is, is general commercial, and it's just hanging out nowhere.
Yeah, because even if the rest of it was eventually commercial for whatever reason, I don't know, but we really want a lot of access up there off of Dumpries anyway.
Rob Roy.
Probably, I don't know, Dumpries, probably.
Yeah, I think your point's well taken. If someone, you really, if someone tore it down and consolidated the other three parcels, would you really want access off Rob Roy from that lot? I think the answer is no.
Right.
Right, there's no parking, there's no...
So we could make it R-3 and, with no issue at all.
That, that's why I would, that would be nice.
I agree, I agree.
Again, we're not in any way going to make this building conforming, but we'll at least make the use work. All right, so what do we want to do with the three residential dwellings that are there in green? Leave them in or take them out?
Can you make those R-3 as well and have that whole, all of that R-3?
We could, we could make them R-3, in which case, then they would all conform, then they would all be conforming uses, but it would then, I mean, that is a possibility. You could make them R-3 as well, or you could leave them Traditional Business, or you could put them R-1C. Let me look very quickly and see...
So is R-1C today, or is the Business District today?
The, the green ones are general commercial today.
I think some of it gets back to your point then, is, do we know what the contractor's view is? I mean, I think that would be another good thing to, like, matter, somebody from the city asks, you know, is, what is your intent? Are you a commercial investor, or are you, is this your house?
Right.
I think you invite radiation without the warning. Well, if we change it.
If you change it.
Right, so if he's, I keep it part of the Traditional Business District, and it would be the same.
And if you keep it a part of the Traditional Business, or if you, you know, create a sub-district where you have shop house, where you're, the changes are minor in terms of use, it's not a big deal. But it is a large investment-backed issue if you change it from general commercial to single-family. It is less of an issue, but still kind of an issue if you make it R-3. I mean, they still got to have some ability, but, let's again, think about that. While the use would be conforming in R-3, you would then be telling people that those three dwellings should be torn down and multifamilies should go there.
Right.
Correct.
I think we could, probably, I don't know.
Yeah. That's why, why could we do it in there?
So just make it Traditional Business District and create it and, and make it a conforming use.
Yep.
Okay.
One.
And, and obviously, we're not going, these are not final decisions, we're going to think about this again. So, in the general commercial district, there is no require, today, there is no requirement for having, you know, required non-residential frontage. First of all, do you want to do that here? And if you do, do these lines work for you? Notice where I put it. It is on the Memorial Parkway side of the existing gas station. It is not on the side that is on South, North Fort Thomas Avenue. And then it is where Tickle Pickle is and the insurance agency. And it is where Smithies is and the yarn shop. And then where that building transitions to all multifamily, it would not be required to be non-residential. But the first policy question is, is it important to you that they have a non-residential footage where you see those purple lines? And if it is, are those the correct places for the purple lines?
You're, so you're basically saying that where the purple lines are, potentially, if we, depending on what, and I don't know exactly what our Traditional Business District regulations would say, but you're, you're saying that that would prohibit any first floor residential use?
Correct. And again, it's a policy choice, I mean, you don't even have to do it here.
I guess, why, why do we want to put it in there?
So the thought process is that if you have non-residential there, and you have a specific requirement, you are then saying, we want this to have retailer office here, and it's important for us to have that concentrated mixture of non-residential uses and dislocation. If you don't put it there, and you, for example, allow multifamily, the gas station could then become all multifamily. Or the building that has Smithies in it could then become all multifamily. So what suddenly was a Business District becomes multifamily. So it becomes, the nature of the Business District changes, as opposed to having non-residential and residential.
It disappears.
So that's, that's the policy. Now, you will notice that I did not require it where, you know, on the other side, where the, is it hometown realty?
Yeah.
Hometown realty is. That is a tough site. And it may at some point convert to all multifamily in order for that building to be usable. And so that was a definitive choice on my part to not cross that street for that reason. And also because if you had, uh, Fort, uh, North Fort Thomas Avenue, once you pass the five-story apartment building, it becomes pretty much single-family. So respecting that as well. But again, knowing what could potentially happen with where Smithies is and the gas station, do you want to require non-residential on the first floor?
It's a very limited commercial district, so I think it'd be nice to make sure it at least has, I mean, on the ground, a little commercial there.
Yeah, something for those people on the north end.
Yeah, that's the last commercial area.
So do you guys think, do you think there should be more business there?
In that area?
Not necessary, no. Because the only thing that...
Being for modern business district, there's three houses.
By, by Smithies?
Yeah.
You know, there's five miles from the north to the south of Fort Thomas. We have Midway, we have CBD, we've got, where are they, Fort Thomas, Fort Thomas Plaza. How many big Business Districts do we need in this small town? I don't, I don't, to allow that, I mean, we've got Tickle Pickle, we've got, we have the exercise place, whatever, it's like, how, how big do you want that district to be when we've got all these other Business Districts?
Well, essentially, we're not changing anything from what's out there right now.
But you could.
Well, they could today. They could today.
It's just there's three houses right now that we said, you include in it.
So we're not changing, we're leaving it?
No.
Because they could do it today right now, if they're allowed to.
And, and they may have bought those for that purpose.
Yeah.
Okay, so I misunderstood that, though.
Yeah.
I just...
The only thing we're really changing is the two apartments next to the, the park there on the south side. We're taking those out and making it residential again, otherwise, we're not changing it.
Thank you.
Good.
All right, so let's move in and actually start talking about uses. And so because this is a sort of a detailed conversation for three separate areas of town...
Yeah, I guess real quick, just before we get, so what do we, what, do we resolve what was going to happen up there, like the guardian savings bank up by DILAC and that little commercial property?
We have not. That's still to come.
I didn't know that was going to also be the Traditional Business District.
So that's actually a, a good question, and that may ultimately happen, but we have not submitted. So moving on to uses. So I have split it up by the three Business Districts, so Inverness, Downtown, Fort Town Center, and Midway. So this is a long, detailed, tedious conversation. I will try to move along as quickly as possible. So in terms, and I've split them up by use categories, just to sort of make it easier to read on the screen and to make it an easier discussion point. So in Inverness, not, but based on what we just said, A and B would become permitted uses. Multifamily would be permitted if it is an existing building. So for example, the hometown model could become that. And then dwelling units above the first floor and dwelling units behind would also be permitted in terms of residential in Inverness. And then in terms of community facilities, we permitted by rights, schools, consumer care facilities would be restricted uses with the restrictions being that they need to be in existing buildings. And then in terms of office, a variety of office and professional uses are permitted by right. Things like the live menu, uh, like music venues would only be allowed completely inside buildings, that's blind action, that has an R. The last thing you want is for, you know, one of those small businesses to be having music outside if the home's right next door. So that's why that is an R. So keep in mind, restricted use means there are restrictions, and I'm going to tell you what those restrictions are as we move through this. If they cannot meet the restrictions, the way the code's currently drafted, it becomes a conditional use and has to go in front of a board adjustment. For the retail uses, restaurants, retail uses, hotels would be permitted by right, but more intense uses like food pubs and artisan production would be restricted uses with restrictions on square footage would be required in Inverness, again, because of the nature of the district.
What is shop house, because you didn't have an indicator?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you mean...
That last line was shop house, since we're talking about those, oops.
Right. So a shop house, I will probably then make that a P, such those three houses are now...
That's what I was curious about.
Are now in the district.
Thank you.
Would, would have to define shop house?
So a shop house is basically live work.
I agree with that, I'm saying in the order.
Yes, yes, we will have to define. And then finally, you have a, a set of other uses, which we have included as a habitable roof, which is a new idea, new concept we haven't talked about before. A habitable roof is like having outdoor dining or on the, on the top floor, or if it's a residential use, having an outdoor patio, those kinds of things would be a habitable roof. Now, if you have a home that has a habitable roof on the top of its garage or its house, or you have a multifamily building, that's one intensity of use, right? But if Tickle Pickle, and I'm not picking on them, I'm just using them as an example, if they took their, their flat roof and made it and used it for outdoor dining, that's a much more intense use because of potential loud noises and those kinds of things. So I have split it up into a habitable roof for non-residential uses, which would be a conditional use in Inverness, and that a habitable roof for residential use would be a P for precisely those reasons. So do you have any concerns with the idea of a habitable roof, any concerns with how I've split it up?
The only thing I was going to say about your parking structure, is there enough space really in any of the parcels that have a parking structure?
So again, if there's no letter, it's prohibited.
Okay.
There's no letter in the column, it's prohibited.
Building code has some concerns about habitable roof?
Yes, it does.
Because you've got exit ways, I mean, do you count that square footage in your parking requirement if in fact your parking requirement's based on square footage? And you have egress issues and all that kind of stuff?
We have all of those things.
You know, if there's a roof on the, on the habit, if there's a roof or a structure over that, is that included in the maximum height then?
So the, all of those things have to be dealt with. In terms of the parking, we are all working on the, you know, at your coach, David, Inverness says there's no parking requirement in general commercial, specifically because of Inverness.
I was going to say, besides the parking structure, do we want to prove service parking lots?
So that is currently in the draft for the parking, which we will be talking about next month. There will be no parking permitted between the building, the front lawn of the building and the left park.
No, I'm just saying, like, if the gas station or somebody says, well, who the always buy gas anymore, I'm going to turn it into electric vehicle charging lot.
So, I think what we have said, based on the conversation we had almost a year ago, is that in no situation would an electrical vehicle charging lot be a principal use. That was a conversation we had back almost a year ago. You would only be, you would only be allowed to have that if it was an accessory use, meaning it became a multifamily building or mixed-use building, and they had two chargers for people who lived there. That would be clear.
Or if the city wanted to come in by the gas station, put it in a front lot.
I mean, the city is not under...
I'm not saying that they will, I'm just saying...
Right.
They could.
So as you will notice...
Support the Business District, they have small street parks.
As you will notice, as a permitted, principal use, parking, whether it's a garage or surface, is not permitted. In, in the Traditional Business District, the only time you're allowed to have parking is as, is as an accessory use.
I'm good with that, I just...
Okay. So I mean, that is already taken care of. And now I forgot what your first question was. Oh, the habitable roof, I'm sorry. I lost it, so. So, yes, we will probably define it as not contributing to parking if, for example, it is outdoor dining for an associated restaurant, or it is a part of a residential use and there are, you know, there are terrace. It's not being used anymore, not requiring any more parking than apartments that are there. In terms of whether or not they cover it, the, then we'll probably make it a, a requirement for height, yes, because then it becomes a higher structure if they have a roof over. Those all your questions, Jim?
Yeah, there are lots of other code issues.
New building code issues. That would perhaps prohibit Tickle Pickle from having outdoor dining there.
Building code isn't really, does that add a story? Because the building code, you know, limits the number of stories for a construction type, and you have habitable roof now, is that another story? Well, it doesn't have a roof, but you have another level of people on it, so, yeah, we haven't figured that one out yet.
That's a building code issue, thank God. Any concerns about having them and how they've been worked out?
And I presume those uses really aren't significantly different from what they're meant there now, do not permit there now.
So my, my preliminary conversation with Kevin is that there have been some preliminary conversations, but with the exception of this building, there aren't really any. But this building does actually have one, as I was told. Or is it just a...
No, there's no roof problem on there.
Okay.
No, I was just getting, just a general, uh, permitted uses, that there's nothing significantly different than people propose, what's...
Well, what, right now, it's completely silent, so Kevin has, and my...
Well, I'm talking about just the general CBD, or general commercial.
It, it, the code's completely silent.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about habitable roofs, I'm talking about just planes, like all your, all your uses up here, none of those are significantly different than what we had before.
Oh, no, correct, correct, with the exception of the habitable roof, yes. Funeral homes, telecommunications...
Just everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Generally speaking, the only thing I have done, now I get your question. The only thing I have done, oh, I think your central Business District, you have, you know, two pages worth of individual uses. Things that say habidashery and...
Consolidated, but essentially...
I'm sorry.
I do not think with my ambition.
I had one community that had a fat rinderin' plant as a use, so, yeah. So all I have done is consolidate those into retail, whether you're selling hats or clothes or eyeglasses.
But essentially...
It's a rooftop.
This is it.
All right. So any other conversations about how the uses have been classified in Inverness? So moving on to the Town Center.
Alyssa, may I interrupt before we do the Town Center again, I mean, before we do the CBD? I have a curiosity or I'm confused about why we're actually moving forward with rezoning the CBD without having a historic consultant on this board or a related board. By our own design review guidelines, any replacement in the CBDs is going to have to be the same scale, the same height, and the same setback. The proposed ordinance, what I've seen, and I understand it's just a proposal, differs from what is existing in the ordinance. And since the two are in conflict, it seems as if we may be setting ourselves up for the potential for lawsuits to be filed over whichever way the decision goes if they conflict. So it seems advisable to get a historic consultation on this process of the CBD, which are the historic, local historic zones, just to get it on the front end rather than trying to clean it up from the back end. Do, does that seem like a reasonable...
So I'm going to ask Mark, because we haven't actually opened it up for, for public discussion, I mean, do we want to go ahead and address that now, or wait till we talk about the law?
Let's just, we'll go ahead and we'll talk about it, but I, I can address your question a little bit later about, there's a difference between the architectural design guidelines and the actual historic part of it. They're two separate things, so more we can talk about that.
But, but hold on, and we'll get there, we'll get there.
I just thought if we were going into CBD...
So right now, we're just doing uses, and we'll stop and have public comment after that, and then we'll move into, to develop the standards. So in terms of the central Business District for the Town Center or Downtown, the core, that is still, and the columns are listed with the core, with the supporting and then the residential sub-districts. For the core, which is basically from one Highland and around that area, we are talking about residential uses would include multifamily buildings only in buildings that exist today. So this would be things like, there's a small multifamily on Autobahn Place, there's one, or eight-unit building there, so that, that's why that is termed restrictive. And then you would be allowed to have dwelling units above and behind non-residential uses because of the flying line we talked about. In the supporting sub-district, single-family detached dwellings would be permitted by right, which would allow the existing homes to then be conforming uses. We are allowing multifamily only in existing buildings as a restricted use, that would be the restriction. So for example, we couldn't tear down all of those homes and put in a multifamily building, but if that, or if some of the larger ones wanted to convert to multifamily, they'd be allowed to do so. And then the ones that are currently multifamily today, because they have residential, non-residential on the first floor and a couple of units upstairs, those would then become conforming. And then in the residential sub-districts, single-family homes would be permitted as well as the existing two families. But again, would not be allowed to convert if they're the two family, and you would not be allowed to build any new building. In both the core and the supporting sub-districts, various community facilities and institutions would be permitted with, by right, with only parks and public facilities being permitted by right in the residential sub-district. In the core and the supporting sub-districts, numerous office uses as well as banks are permitted. In the residential sub-district, only an office shop house would be permitted, and that's actually as a restricted use. And so again, a shop house is a live-work, things you could have, for example, an office on the first floor and residential above, but those restrictions would be also things like movement in the number of employees that could be there and signs. So you are again allowing that single-family use or allowing them some ability to use it as a business. So we're not taking away all of their development rights by making the sub-districts available. In terms of retail and personal services in Downtown, in the core sub-district, typical retail, restaurant, personal services would be, such as salons, would be permitted by right. In the supporting sub-district, more intense uses such as food pubs are not permitted, but they are permitted in the core. And then in the residential sub-districts, again, we would only be permitting the retail shop house or an artisan workspace. So right now in Downtown, you actually have some drive-through uses, and there's a conditional use in Downtown today, and you have those, what, free banks that have a drive-through, but you don't have any restaurants that are a drive-through, even though those are permitted in Downtown, under the current zoning. So my question to you is, do we want to move forward with allowing those as conditional uses when we move to this new zoning code, or do we want to make the existing banks and their drive-throughs non-conforming?
Can we allow drive-throughs with banks, but not with restaurants and food service places?
The only thing you could do would make it a conditional use and have an objective state... and have an objective standard that says the drive-through can have only X number of trips per day and make it low enough that it would only really work for a bank. But it would not, or some really, really small restaurant that has minimal drive-through traffic.
You can't control it by the use.
But I can't control it by the use. All I can do is put a condition out that limits the number of trips. The key would be to tell me what that number is and then the applicant would then have to provide you with data. Because just because you have these three banks with limited drive-through, there are other banks that have more drive-through traffic. In fact, there's one, one community I worked in, that converted its bank, you know, its standalone facility, to just all drive-throughs. And there are four drive-through lanes where the bank used to be, which is an interesting thing to do. Which obviously has more trips than your current one-drive-through lane that you have at, you know, US Bank or whatever. So, the key question is, do we want to make them conditional as they are today or do we want to make them non-conforming?
Does this affect Fifth Third, too?
Yes. It does, so it would be Fifth Third, US Bank and Garland Bank.
And West Bank, I don't know.
I'm sorry, which one? Oh, I'm sorry, it was fourth. I forgot that one.
After the Fifth Third went in, I think our thought was when we created the CBD initially, the thought of the drive-through. We did want to create non-conforming, but at the same time, we basically was, that's the last term.
But if you put it as conditional, you are saying that we are accepting this use based on these conditions. You do not have the legal ability to turn it down.
I understand.
I'm not telling you, I'm just sort of letting you know.
I mean, I'm trying to remember what the conditional constraints are right now.
You have none. Right now, all you have is it's a conditional use and it has to go in front of the Board of Adjustment. One of the standards that, one of the things that we're changing in this is we will actually have both objective and subjective standards for your conditional uses. And so, when I say objective, it would be the number of trips a day. That's a defined term.
I mean, in reality, I just don't see anything building a drive-through standalone branch anymore.
You're ten years in, you may not be able to drive through. I'll do it all home.
Like I said, just had that one client, they took the bank building down and put in, you know, four drive-throughs, which I didn't anticipate happening.
They would have put an ATM as a drive-through.
Well, that's why they don't have a building. They have four ATMs.
We don't want any.
Where the bank used to be. The bank came down, they put in four lanes with ATMs.
Too many drive-throughs do matter what they are.
Is a traffic concern, no doubt. And it's also a walkability concern. You are then disrupting the walkability of your area. And, you know, you don't have a lot of people who are on scooters and who are walking and they're not paying, you know, people in the drive-through are counting their money as they're coming out. And they're going to blow down that person's...
We're trying to choose a neighborhood.
Maybe with my friend.
Yeah, maybe with our...
My wife does it every day.
Is there a restriction against parking in the front of the buildings? Does that prevent a drive-through in the front of the building?
No.
I know that's not how they're set up now, but somebody could, in theory, use their front of the building for a drive-through. Well, I don't know.
I don't think I... By precluding parking between the building and the front lot line, that in and of itself does not preclude...
Well, because we were talking about the bank buildings in the setback area there and we were talking about allowing it to remain at 25 feet or whatever that was, which would probably allow somebody to move their drive-through to the front.
You see, okay, so it's just...
I'm not suggesting that they are, but I have a restriction against that, even though we're restricting parking in the front.
We could put that, if we leave it as conditional, then we could put that as a condition, that the drive-through has to be on the side or the back of the building, not on the front. Because you're right, they could just, you know, not occupy a building, take out the grass and put the ATM on the front and have a drive-through ATM in the front. They could do that. That would have to be a condition if you decide to make it conditional. That's a very valid point.
My heart with Fifth Third is the least in terms of looking, driving, everything.
You don't see it?
Correct.
Because it's too far back?
Well, it's down below and behind and it's low grade.
And it's a large lot, right, as opposed to like West Bank or whatever?
I mean, my bigger concern is, like you said, you can't control by use. And if the third decides, well, the bank branch isn't cutting it anymore, but then we have McDonald's, it's good there, or whatever the case might be. A big, big coffee wants to go there, then...
You have no ability to say no.
Right.
The only thing we could do would be to come up with those standards that I said, prohibit by only having, generating a certain number of trips per day.
And how do they control how much they generate?
Well, when it comes before the Board of Adjustment, again, it has to come in front of the Board of Adjustment. She does Kentucky law, can't come here. They will have to prove this is the number of trips our other restaurants of similar size with the same number of windows generate. And then at some point in time, if Mark gets a complaint that says this is more traffic, then he has to go out and enforce it and start counting cars. So, it's a issue in the front end and it's an issue at some point in time in terms of enforcement.
I'll give answers.
I mean, I would be okay, honestly, just make it a non-conforming period.
It could just be non-conforming. Now, having said that, your example about Fifth Third Bank going from Fifth Third Bank to McDonald's, we would still have to allow that, even as a non-conforming use. So, just by making it...
Unless they redevelop the site.
Unless they develop the site, right. But if the same building stays in place and they don't change the drive-through configuration at all when it goes from Fifth Third to McDonald's, we would have to allow. So, you know, just making it non-conforming in and of itself does not eliminate the use upon the changed ordinance. But it does say there'll be no new ones.
I'd be in favor of the central business district not conforming.
I mean, I don't think any of those banks would quite redevelop the cars they are.
And then second issue with habitable roofs, which we've already discussed, so we don't need to do that. So, again, in terms of, listen, let's take a minute and just look at the residential uses for the residential sub-district. So, as a permitted use, single-family detached, two-family, if it's there today, the ordinance passed, the shophouse, whether it's a small retail, small office, and then a small art studio. Any concerns with the uses in the residential sub-district? So, let's move on to Midway. So, we actually, as again, we have five sub-districts in Midway. There are three core districts, the MC1, MC2, and MC3. Just refresh your memory, the core one is from grassroots in mind all the way to best furniture. The core two is what we're showing in blue on the map. And then the core three today, may not be in the future, is Cincinnati Bell and the VA Hospital. So, in the MC1, residential uses would only be permitted above and behind the ground floor, non-residential. And then in the other midway core sub-districts, multifamily uses would be permitted on the first floor. Limited community facilities and institutions are permitted in the midway core one sub-district because of the desire to have active uses in this area. A variety of community facilities and institutions are permitted in the other two core districts. And then the permitted uses in the midway core three, as it's currently constructed, in order to deal with the VA potentially leaving schools and colleges, would be permitted in that sub-district. Again, that is all subject to change when we have this more in-depth conversation. And then in the midway core sub-districts, again, the core sub-districts typical offices would be permitted as well as health clubs. And then the usual retail restaurant and personal services would also be permitted in the core sub-districts. And then drive-through uses are not permitted at all in the core. They are permitted today, but you don't have any. So, there's no reason to permit them there. And again, I will point out the habitable roofs, because you do have some, you know, intensive bars and things down in Midway. And it's going to be important to have those as conditional and restricted, excuse me, as a restricted use to deal with that issue. And then in terms of the residential districts, the residential district one, which is those five homes on South Fort Thomas Avenue and Midway Court. Again, Midway Court conversation has been delayed. Again, this is a placeholder. The midway two residential are the homes on Garrison, Shawnee, River, and Southview. In both of those sub-districts, the single-family detached homes are permitted. Two families are restricted uses, meaning they can exist, they exist today, but no two families would be permitted. And then again, office and retail shophouses are permitted by right in the midway residential one. So, if the whole house wanted to be an office, it would be permitted to do so. And then in midway residential two, which are those homes on Shawnee and Garrison and all of that, it's a restricted use. And those restricted uses would be things like the number of employees that you talked about, signage, and a square footage. Again, because it's a very different character for those homes that are on Garrison and Shawnee than the homes that Florida on, on the South Fort Thomas. Any concerns about how the residential has been classified for Midway? All right, so at this point, if it's okay with y'all and with Mark, we'll stop. And since we've had a long conversation about the districts themselves and the uses, stop and take community comments, if that's okay.
Fine. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Sharon McKnight, 62 Miller Lane. I have a few questions. And thank you again, Alisa, for always meeting with us. You're so kind with your time. We appreciate it. I appreciate all of you. There's a few things that popped up since I've been coming to these meetings. And the one concern I have is the word shophouse and on the top of Miller Lane and Lumley. I talk to a lot of these residents and a lot, and I don't think we want to do that down there. I think we want to preserve the residential part of that on our streets and keep that off and keep it more on the avenue. When I talked to a lot of people last summer about the rezoning, a lot of them, some of them didn't even know they were in the CBD district, you know what I mean? Their house was actually restricted. But they were all for keeping it residential. Now, I know since then, a couple people, a couple houses have sold since then, but I figured since they're already grandfathered in, why would you even have to have the shophouse as an option anyway? So, I'm kind of asking if you could keep that more residential down there and keep that in mind. I also have a comment about the supporting districts that we have in the central business district. I really would like to keep as much green space as possible because to me, that's the character of the town that I've always loved and grown up with. And if we could keep, you know, the footage between them, I mean, I don't know how this all works. This is all new to me, but if you have houses right now from the Masonic Lodge all the way on the force and you've got these great 20 to 30-feet spaces between them and great setbacks with the green space, I'd like to see that protected as much as possible because I think that adds to the charm and the green space. I just don't want to see any more parking lines or more density in that area. And I do have a question. When did we not have a parking restriction? I thought we always had, you had to have so many parking spaces downtown and the town center. Did I mishear that? Because I know it was a while back, but someone said we didn't have a parking restriction.
So, the ordinance today allows the planning commission to waive the parking requirements in both the central business district and the general commercial district. And I don't know when that was put in place, but that is the restriction, that is what it says today. And Dave may know when it was put in.
So, when did that happen?
It's been maybe 15, 20 years.
Really?
But it's not like, it's not just a car block. Anybody can come in here and have it in parking. They would still have to demonstrate how they would meet the parking and it allowed the planning commission flexibility. Well, there's plenty of, like I was saying earlier, there's plenty of long-street commercial. There's plenty of spots up Fort Thomas Avenue in front of my business and I only need ten spots and I could provide six, but I need four more. Then we can let them off the hook and say, well, there's four up Fort Thomas Avenue, you're good to go. So, it just gave us that flexibility and I think that was some of the complaints, you know, this 10, 15 years ago. A lot of property owners were saying, well, I don't have enough flexibility because there's no way I can meet the parking unless I consolidate three or four parcels and build a bigger development. There's no way I can meet the parking requirements for each individual of the lot.
And there are also parking arrangements or agreements.
Between property.
The Post has one.
Right.
With, who's down there.
Craig.
Right.
No, the Post.
Across the street, you mean?
Yeah.
Michelle Story.
She's a female.
Oh, yes, Michelle.
Michelle, yeah.
Okay, and so, sometimes they'll have to do a way of an arrangement like that that allows them to create more parking and have a waiver of the actual parking.
So, it doesn't just say you don't have to meet any parking requirement. It just says, we have the ability to work with them on a case.
Yeah, but not large scale. I mean, because you know what happens, it goes down the side street, so I always, that's why we...
Right, and that's, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your time and listening, thanks.
Is anybody up?
Did you want to interrupt or do you repeat what I said?
I guess we can, I have just a little bit. So, you were asking, shouldn't we have like a historic consultant, correct? Is that what your question was or your...
Consultation, yes, that's in the design review guidelines.
Right, so, firstly, I do think we should, or I think the city should. But in terms of what we're talking about, in terms of land use and development control, to some degree, it doesn't matter whether a building is historic or not historic. It's, you know, it doesn't affect that directly necessarily.
But if the CBD is in a local historic district, I think that a historic consultation is in order. If they, if the design review guidelines state any replacement, and we are talking about replacement as an option or a possibility for the future, they have to be of the same scale with the same height requirements and the same setbacks. So, instead of making these changes, opening the door, having it happen in direct conflict to what it says the requirement is. There's a conflict and it seems as if there could be...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. So, ultimately, the way that the ordinance is written, it basically affirms to the underlying zoning ordinance. But to your point, once we go through this whole zoning and ordinance update process and once that's kind of finalized, there probably needs to be a review of the design review board ordinance and make sure that they're conforming with each other at some point.
But you're saying they should, like, you're expecting to do that.
Right, I guess what I'm saying is because if we change the zoning, doesn't mean that the other city ordinance can't be also adjusted to make sure they match.
It's still, that seems backwards to me, that we would make the changes that are not allowed and then say, well, now they're allowed.
The way, so that an overlay district, which is what the CBD ordinance is... Well, the way, so that an overlay district, which is what the CBD ordinance is, it's an overlay district, it is subservient to the zoning district. So it's controlled by state law. So essentially, the city created this under the guise of KRS, I think it's 1966. And so essentially, the way that reads is that it's on top of the zoning district. It can add additional requirements on top of the zoning. But first, we've got to figure out the zoning, and then we've got to go back into the other ordinance and make sure that they're in line with each other. And I do agree with you that I think it would benefit the city to have a historic consultant come in and look at the contributing structures, which has never been done in the town center. But that doesn't really, you know, like I said, what we're doing in terms of the uses and most of the development guidelines is kind of independent of whether it's in a storage structure or not in a storage structure.
I just disagree with that. Not historic structure, but historic zone.
Yeah, I mean, what ultimately will happen if we bring in a consultant to look at it, they'll do a survey of each individual structure, and then they'll determine, is it a contributing structure or a non-contributing structure? If it's a non-contributing structure, essentially, it doesn't fall into any historic regulation. So like, this building is not historic. It would not, even though it's in the CBD district, it's not an historic, it's not an historic contributing building, so if the city wanted to redo it like they just did, there would be no requirement to that. Same way with the third, same way with the walk-in horse building, without the drug center. Some of these other buildings aren't really contributing from a historic standpoint. They wouldn't be regulated as an historic structure.
So I don't want to misinterpret what you're saying. It sounds to me as if you're saying being in a historic zone means nothing.
No, it doesn't necessarily mean nothing. Like the Masonic Lodge, some of the residences across the street, those probably are contributing, and so they would fall under those regulations. But if it's not an historic building, it's not historic.
And I know Matt has reached out. He's intending to meet with Sharon and with Dave, and that something could happen in early August is what I was told. And so...
On the comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan, also that the issue that Joan has brought up. And so we're continually along with this process, but Matt is intending to have a meeting with at least the two ladies that expressed an interest in anybody else. I'm sure he'll meet and listen and decide if that's something we need. I think there's genuine interest in that, but it's just not there.
The criteria to decide that's done through the Kentucky Heritage Council, it's not really, the city can't say that it's historic or not historic if the Kentucky Heritage Council says it is or isn't. It really falls to them to say whether it's historic or not, and essentially, you need a...
The zone?
Well, so the zone, in terms of historic regulation, really only applies, even within a zone, only applies to a contributing structure. And if it's not a contributing structure, you can't restrict it for historical reasons. You can still have Design Guidelines and things like that, but you can't say this building is historic when the state finds that it's not.
So I guess...
Or vice versa. You can't say, oh, that's not historic, and the state, and somebody goes through the process, and like the women's building, or the women's building, it's historic, so the city can't just say it's not an historic building.
What did they do to get, if you didn't have someone that went down and did the process like you said, how would you just say the women's building just because of the...
Because somebody nominated it, did go through that process.
They did for that building only?
For that building.
That only, out of the whole city, the whole town?
The whole town center, I think that's the only one that's gone through the process, yeah.
Really? So that's interesting. This is all new.
Like in Midway, the city did go through it with Midway.
Yeah, but if an owner can do the process themselves?
Yeah, I think property owner can nominate the property, but it still is determined by the Kentucky Heritage Council.
That's interesting. Okay, thanks.
I mean, anybody consult, you can go home and say, my house is historic, and try to get it listed if you want.
Yeah, I understand that part.
I'm not an expert, but probably very few in the midtown or downtown area probably would be contributing structures. I mean, there just aren't that many historic buildings.
You don't think that?
They're more than 100 years old, is that...
Again, I'm not an expert.
Yeah, none of us are, so we need to get one.
And that's why I turned, I thought you should go in.
Good point, Sharon. That's why we need one.
That's interesting, that.
I guess I understand history, I understand better than other people. To me, if something's 125 years old, it seems a bit historic to me. You know what I'm saying? I'm...
It more likely is, but it's complicated.
Lots of people think the theater building is, you know, a very historic building here, but it's been modified so much, I don't think the Heritage Council would say that's a historic building. They've, you know, it's no longer even, there's no longer even a big theater space in it. It's, the marquee's gone, you know, all those lights are gone. There's a new facade on the front of it, and, you know, there's really very little left of that historic theater building.
I'm stunned that it means nothing. I'm stunned.
Well, I'm saying it doesn't mean anything, but...
Doesn't mean much.
Anything else?
So the development standards are next. In terms of the development standards, the Planning Commission or the Design Review Board may grant waivers to most of the development standards with the exception of maximum height. There is no ability to grant an exception to that as it's currently drafted. Following the conversations with council and with the Planning Commission that we had in June, in the downtown core and the Midway Core One and Two sub-districts, the maximum height has been reduced from 50 feet to 40 feet. And then in the Midway Core Three Sub-District, as it's currently constructed, which is again the VA hospital, the 50-foot maximum height is being retained because that building is about 45 feet at this point in lifetime. In terms of the supporting district, you will notice that it's been reduced from 50 feet to 35 feet. So everything that was blue on the map now has a maximum, as it currently is drafted, now has a maximum height of 35 feet in the blue area. There is one circumstance where an increased height is permitted in the town center core and the town center supporting districts, whereas the building is 100 feet from the back of the sidewalk, they would then be allowed to increase the height by 10 feet, but only in that limited situation. So the front part of the building would have to be, for example, 35 feet. Then 100 feet back from the lot line, the building could go up 10 more feet. And there are very few parcels that have the depth to do that. But there is that possibility as the ordinance is currently drafted, assuming that the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board approve it. In the core sub-districts, there's a very small, as in zero, minimum setback, and then maximum front setbacks are prescribed along South Fort Thomas Avenue. In the town center supporting sub-district, so Sharon, this is where you're talking about, the minimum front setback would be 25 feet. So that green space or that area would be maintained there, instead of being all the way to the sidewalk. Also, in the supporting sub-district, there are minimum side yards to ensure that separation between buildings. And then in addition to that, we've also established maximum building widths to make sure that the buildings are not so big. And that maximum width in the supporting district is 75 feet. And to give you a frame of reference, one Highland from the corner of Highland to the end of that building is about 185 feet long. And 75 feet in width is the building at the corner of Forest and North Fort Thomas.
Hendry Building or something?
That's the width, that's 75 feet. So to give you a frame of reference as to what those numbers mean. So in the supporting district, a building can be no wider than that.
I'm sorry, what are you saying, between buildings and the buildings?
They have to have setbacks between the buildings in the supporting district. They cannot be connected.
Okay, I know, but I, because like right now, we have like 30, 40 feet between each other.
You actually don't. Between those houses, in some cases, you only have, in one case, you have very limited, but in most cases, you have about 14 feet between.
Which, what's happening?
All those four houses, those houses between the Masonic Lodge and Fifth Third Bank. In some places, there are, in some places, there aren't. Because you have very small, some of them have very small sidewalk setbacks. And this, and truthfully, it was difficult to sort of come up with a number because there was, unlike the front setback, there was no rhythm to that separation. But there are, they will be required to have separation, and they will be required to have front setback in the blue area, which is those homes, as well as the two banks and the post-ops that we were just talking about. The development standards also include objective street facade requirements. These are requirements that require a minimal amount of transparency or glass on the building facade, and then they prohibit blank walls, so you can't have blank wall like you have in some of the buildings in Midway. And then we also, they're all required to have entrances, and the spacing between those entrances is also mandated as well. And this is the case where the Design Review Board may grant waivers. These are more design standards, and so the waivers can be granted by the Design Review Board instead of the Planning Commission. And the reason that they have that ability is that many of these buildings are existing. And so while these are great numbers for new buildings, they aren't necessarily always going to work for existing buildings. And so understanding that gives the Design Review Board a little bit of flexibility. So in terms of the development standards, do those make sense to y'all? Any concerns that you have about that? So I mean, you will notice that there is an incredible amount of detail. Today, we have the development standards in the Central Business District, and basically we'd say the Planning Commission can set them. So we've gone from one extreme to having a page and a half of numbers, but those numbers all have any work. You know, for examples, I was saying, the supporting district, we are regulating where they can go in the lot, we are regulating how wide they can be. We are doing all of those things to hopefully create a built environment that more reflects what you and your community want.
Do we explicitly say that those, not a appeal, but a request for a variance would be through the Design Review Board?
Yep, so if you look at the chart, and so again, we set up a waiver process, and we talked about that two months ago. And the decision that was made, I was asking this question, should we allow waivers to everything or only where it's expressly stated in the ordinance? And you also, we felt more comfortable if we expressly stated. So in that chart, where all of the columns, all of the sections, except for the facade requirements, you have the ability to grant the waiver. I mean, for the facade requirements, it goes to the Design Review Board, but the one thing that no one can weigh is the height. That is set. Now, having said that, that everyone under state law has the ability to go to the Board of Adjustment and ask for variance in height. We are not taking that ability away because we don't have the ability to take that away. But they cannot ask for a waiver. We have several predominantly residential sub-districts, and we had to create a separate development standards for those that reflect the existing built environment, and so there were three separate ones, for town center and then for the two Midway zones. The built environment, even within those three areas, it's varied. So in some sense, I did not, I always try to make the lots conforming if I can. You know, there's one case in the MR2 where the lot is 2,500 square feet down Midway Court, those kinds of things. So these numbers are my best estimate to get as many of lots and structures conforming as possible. But again, we could not just not have separate standards for the sub-districts and have the standards that we have for the things up front on Fort Thomas Avenue. There has to be a separate design standards, excuse me, development standards for the sub-districts. Any concerns about any of those numbers? Try to... And again, if you, at some point in time, you say, you know, the minimum for one side of 3 feet is too small, we can change that. But believe it or not, you have numbers of people whose lot line, whose house is sitting on the lot line, or sitting a foot off the lot line, and those kinds of things. 3 feet is about what you can have and get your lawnmower through there. You know, that's about it. I work in one community where someone's house is sitting six inches off the lot line, and they are having a dispute with their neighbor next door, and they can't mow their lawn. So odd things happen like that. So that 3-foot number is, I can get my lawnmower through there, but there are places where you have houses that are six foot off the lot line. It's just the way it is. Any concerns with any of those? So based on the conversations that we had in January and our discussions with the City Council on June 5th, in addition to all of those objective facade requirements that you see in that chart, there are also required design standards that are applicable in the Traditional Business District, the Town Center Core, and the Midway Core One and Two Sub-Districts. And so we'll spend a few minutes sort of running through all of those in terms of process. For the Traditional Business District, the Design Review Board will provide a recommendation to the Planning Commission if a development plan is required. If they are only making exterior changes, it goes to the Design Review Board for them to review and approve potentially. In the Central Business Districts, because those are all in the local historic district, the Design Review Board will review all the changes and issue a COA as is their current process. So that is why there are two separate review processes. The two districts that are currently CBD are in the local historic district and are subject to COAs. In Burness, it's not. So the design standards will require corners to be situated with unique architectural features such as a chamfered corner or rounded corners and increased building height. The mass and scale standards require long buildings to be broken up so that the building appears to be two or more separate buildings. Breaking up the mass this way reduces the perceived mass of the building as you're walking along the sidewalk. Possible ways to break up the mass include changing of materials, making the facade, you know, come out further, so you change the planes, and the minimum number is 3 feet. Other techniques require the buildings to have one story, require them to have a defined bottom, middle, and top, so that you don't have a one long flat facade. So you can see here in this particular location where they have actually done sort of a combination of all of that, the building actually comes out in places, they change materials, so the mass of the building is broken out. And not all these are great pictures, but there are some pictures that sort of help you understand. In terms of the facade articulation and design, we are requiring that the building materials be substantial instead of just thinly veiled and applied in order to get depth and texture to them.
I guess I have just one question with the materials.
Okay, the materials themselves or...
Well, just in general, I guess it's a question. Have these proposed regulations been ordered by the Design Review Board or the...
So we are actually going to have, Kevin and I, and Mark and I have had a conversation, and we're going to have a meeting with them and let them think about whether or not these are appropriate.
That's all, that's all.
Because they are, you know, several of them are architects. And so we'll have a conversation with them, both about the process and about whether or not they can use these.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I personally would rather have their comments on this part of it before we make any decisions.
Well, I certainly understand that. So again, this is just sort of a lording to all of this, and then we're going to have that conversation before there's any final standards adopted. So in terms of your materials and colors, durable materials such as brick or masonry are required on the first floor in order to withstand pedestrian contact. We've all been in areas where they have EFAS, which is sort of fake stucco. Somebody's scooter runs into the front of the building and really can't compare it and repair it in a way that looks nice. So we're requiring durable materials on the first floor, concrete masonry units, vinyl siding, aluminum, wood slat siding, EFAS, synthetic stucco, T111. All of those kinds of things are prohibitive materials. So we are not telling you what you have to use, but we are giving you a list of prohibitive materials.
And like I said, I'd rather the Design Review Board weigh in before we...
Right, before you prohibit anything. But those are all fairly standard things in most nice downtowns. Those are not anything particularly unusual. I made the decision that colors are suggestions in the code, they are not mandatory. It's suggesting that the colors be limited to three or fewer, excluding a neutral tint color. But again, those are suggestions, it's a should, it's not a shall. The Design Review Board may have a different opinion of that. They may actually want to mandate colors, but that'll be a conversation to have with them. As we discussed during the development standards, there's a defined amount of transparency that is required, and the reason for that is when you're having a downtown, you want to be able to engage and see what's going on in the building, able to walk in there. as you're walking down the sidewalk. So in order to do that, you have to have transparent windows. Sometimes what people will then do, they'll put the windows up, but they will put highly reflective film on them or they will block it with furniture, or those kinds of things. So what these standards do is prohibit that highly reflective glass, the blocking of windows. And then we've also prohibited flashing or rolling illumination, those kinds of things that you see in some places where they try to call attention to it by having the lights run around the windows. As we talked about, building entries are also regulated. They have to be differentiated from the facade either through projections or recesses and then the glass on the doors have to be transparent. Onings have to be integral to the design of the building and then we have said that you can't have stretched vinyl onings, you can't have onings that are internally illuminated and only shed onings are permitted, no curved or curved ones. We've included minimal sign design standards. All we have done in terms of the mandatory is prohibiting box and cabinet signs and we've said that power sources, race waves, those kinds of things have to be concealed to reduce visual impact. And then there is some sign guidance, just shoulds, which says that the character of the sign materials should be expressive to the individual proprietor, signs at the corner should be iconic. We're asking people to use a unique typography in their sign design and to integrate creative lighting. Again, having cool signs is a great way to create waste, but it's not necessarily appropriate to dictate what that should be. That should be individual in terms of the building owner themselves. So you obviously think you need to talk to the design review board, which we will. Are there any other comments that you have on design standards? You know, you're okay with including them?
I think it's okay to include, but I don't want their info in this specific section.
And hopefully by the time we come back to do this during phase three, we'll have that conversation with them.
Elisa, early on in much of the documentation, as soon as the word should, it meant you don't have to, you might think about it. And you just used the word should, is that still the case?
Yes, that's the case, so we're talking about.
So I don't know, I'm unclear why to put it in if it's like, if you feel like it or don't feel like it, doesn't really matter.
Again, you're setting a signal, you're saying, this is something that we think important. And there are some communities who say you actually have to have, just give this example. All signs have to be sandblasted wood because we want all of them to look the same way. By putting the should out there saying, we want iconic signs, we want you to, you know, show the character of your business through your sign, you are telling them that's okay, go ahead and do it, design something lovely. So that is the reason for doing it, you're showing them what's important as they start to design your sign.
When you were talking about the stone or the brick or the wood or the vinyl or whatever, that was, that sounded sort of mandatory, that these are your choices.
Those are shaws. So we are prohibiting, you know, T-111 and aluminum siding and all of those things. You have to have durable materials on the first floor, those are all shaws. Because those are, and the reason they're shaws is what I said, for example, about the durability of materials. If you have a building that has fake stucco on it and it is injured in some way by a scooter, it's very difficult to repair and therefore that degrades the look of your town. That's important, that's important enough to make it a shaw.
Fully understand and I agree 100%. I just, after finding all of the shoulds, from the studies that we've done, the research we've done, should is the default for must unless proven otherwise. And discussion with different boards.
In zoning language, a should is a suggestion, a shaw is a requirement.
From what, from what was your first part of that sentence?
In zoning ordinance language, in every zoning ordinance written in the country, if it says shaw or must, some places use must, if it says shaw or must, that is a legal requirement that has to be met unless a variance is granted by the board of adjustment. Should in zoning ordinance language is a suggestion.
But it also gives you, like for the design review board anyway, if somebody comes, if you don't give them anything, if somebody comes in with something and then the design review board rejects it, they say, well, what should I have done? At least they, the design review board can point out to the shoulds and say, you did or didn't do the following and this is the reason why we're rejecting it. And then you can have an argument, a discussion back and forth, but at least you have a frame of reference to make a discussion. You don't have anything.
Same we thought was worth talking about. I just want a clarification from Elisa, so thank you, Elisa. And I think that it was a different reference that we found that should means the default, unless specified otherwise, was the default for must, but might not have been zoning ordinance that may have been a design review guideline. It was in the historic.
Do you want to take any more comments? So it's 10 till 9, so at this point, we can move on to the other sections or we could recess.
So what, where are we at here?
So we'll be moving on to the general regulations and the temporary accessory use regulations.
I think we'll take a look at my timer.
I hope we adjourned immediately.
Yeah. I think we covered it.
We covered an enormous amount of material.
Same way with that.
Second? A little favor? Let's go.